Let's hold order the December Finance Committee meeting. We have all committee members present as well as all four other council members and the mayor. So everyone is here today. Thank you all for being here. Due to the pandemic, all committee meetings are participating virtually. For virtual meetings, committee members will be muted until asked to be heard. When there is a vote, it will be necessary to take a roll call vote. A committee member will be recognized, raise their hand and state their vote. Additionally, there is no second council meeting this month. As you recall, we do not have council meetings in the month of July, and we do not have a second council meeting in December because of Christmas. All committee items that are considered today will move to the January 3rd City Council meeting. With that, I have polled prior to starting the meeting, I polled all eight council members, and there were no items on consent that anyone wanted pulled. Are there any, excuse me, John Larson wanted C8, 9, and 13. Are there any others that anyone would like pulled? If not, can I get a motion from a committee member to approve the balance?
Move for approval Chair of the balance of the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion by Adams, second by McIntosh. All in favor, please respond to the roll call.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes, that is approved. Thank you all very much. We will now go to the first item pool, which is C8. It's a city clerk, please read that.
Item C8, resolution approving a contract with Fuchsia's LLC for security camera management system.
Mr. Larson, you wanted this poll. You have.
Yes, these two items, the next few items seem to deal with security. Probably going to come up in the Public Safety Committee. I was curious more about the budget. There's two 49,000 items, and I assume one's for programming and one's for the cost, the cost of the programming, and the other is the cost of the contracts to maintain the system. Is that what briefly is what we're dealing with here?
Could somebody comment on this?
Can I speak to that?
Yeah, Tom, go ahead. I didn't know you were there. Go ahead.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Chair Clark, Mayor Pro Tim and council members. Tom Kreska, CIO, and there's two separate items here. As Councilmember Larson said, C8 pertains to the Information Systems Department, C9 to the WSPD. So Information Systems as a project this year, we have well over 300 cameras, and we're continuing to add. One of our work items is to consolidate them into some management systems that allow staff and whoever they need to see video during incidents. So we were going to find a cloud solution for this. And in parallel, WSPD was implementing, as you know, the real-time crime center. And Fuchsia's platform, C9 really is an item that police is bringing to you to buy, I'll call it the management, the main core of the Fuchsia's product that PD is using for the crime center. Item C8 is an interface software that allow our staff, IT folks, to in turn integrate those 360 cameras around all of our facilities into the crime center. So that's the differences. C9 is the core platform that PD is buying to their larger product. C8 represents the interface software that allows us, the IS, to tie our cameras into it. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, so Tom, both are software. One is an interface software and the other one is the basic program software.
Correct. PD is buying the primary product, and we're buying the interface allows us to tie our cameras in. But they're, yes, you're right. And we basically, the vendor basically split the cost, which is, you know, pretty fair how they split it.
Okay, Mr. McIntosh, you had a comment?
Yeah, first of all, Tom, good to see you. Secondly, in the past, when we had talked about cameras, we had talked about getting software that would allow us to monitor private cameras as well. Does this, is this product capable of doing that?
Yes, I appreciate sharing. Yes, the Fuchsia's platform will allow police department to integrate. They already have some, they're already doing it, integrate, for example, Ring cameras and private citizens. So the Fuchsia's platform from the police side will allow them to bring in RIT cameras as well as private citizens, businesses, and for example DOT or maybe Forsyth County, other government. So yes, it's much bigger than just IS. So item not the big picture, item made is my department's work item.
Great, okay, thanks.
So, Mr. Larson, go ahead.
So is this funded by an outside grant? Did I read that correctly?
The item number nine, the PD, there is outside grants they've been involved with. Ours, the item made is internal operating, which is one reason why you're seeing two separate council items. We were actually going to bring it together, but because of the Department of Justice requirements, PD had to have a separate council item. Again, I don't speak for Chief Thompson, but yeah, so we were, we broke it out because of Department Justice requirements, but we certainly are collaborating with them. The 49,000 you're seeing in aid is in the IS operating budget, and police is covering theirs to grants.
Their grant program, excellent. Thank you so much.
John, can you, you can't make a motion. Can I get a motion to approve C8? We'll vote on these one at a time, even though we've covered both of them.
So moved.
Mr. Taylor has made a motion to approve. McIntosh, do you second? Thank you. If the city clerk, please roll call.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes, that's C8. C9, Tom has already been over it. Unless there are other questions or comments, can I get a motion on C9, please?
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion by McIntosh, second by Taylor. If the city clerk will please poll the committee.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes, that is approved. We will now go to C13. If the city clerk will please read that.
Item C13, resolution authorizing the granting of an encroachment agreement on city-owned property located at Long Green Park. This item was continued from the November 8th, 2021 Finance Committee meeting.
Would either Mr. Royston or Kurt Morley comment on this? This is a little complicated if they give us a one-minute review. I don't know who's out there.
Good afternoon, Chair, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim Adams, members of the committee. This item was polled from the November agenda. When the city originally purchased the former Long Creek Golf Course property, we had several public input meetings with the community, being well aware that there were some residents that boarded the former golf course that may have had fences, some small structures and buildings, and maybe some other personal belongings that were on the former Long Creek property. During those public input sessions, one of the things that we committed to was working with the residents and finding an amenable solution to working out whether fences needed to be moved, providing encroachment agreements, maybe possibly selling parkland, which is a much more difficult process, but just trying to figure out a way to work through those individual issues in the best interest of the homeowners and in the best interest of the city. When we were approached from this particular resident, they were selling their home. We did find that the garage, a three-car garage, was built on the former Long Creek Golf Course property. The seller of the property reached out to Kurt Buerling, the real estate administrator for the city, and we worked through various issues. And what was ultimately decided upon was providing an encroachment agreement with the resident in good faith with what was communicated to them during many of the public input sessions when we purchased the property. The item comes back to the Finance Committee today with no changes. We did have, go back and look at this, and look at this particular instance and look at former, former ones where we've had similar situations with former, with current landowners, and this falls in line with what we've done before and also with the commitments that we've made to the community out there at Long Creek.
Mr. Royston, approximately how large is the little piece of land we're talking about?
Chair, it's .12 acres. It's a little over a tenth of an acre. It's in an area of the park that has been maintained by the homeowner previously. There is no development from the city that is planned for this particular area. We feel that it's a win-win solution for us and the homeowners.
Thank you for that introduction. John, did you have any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I remain somewhat concerned about the transference of park property, basically out of the park into a perpetual ownership, not ownership, but agreement that gives all rights and considerations to a homeowner without any compensation to the city. And although somebody built a garage apparently illegally on somebody else's property, we're now confronted with a situation in the city of how to deal with that. And it seems to me that from a city's perspective, you know, that's not really our problem that they put a garage on their particular piece of property that wasn't theirs. I guess if we're going to allow this thing to remain, and we're not going to ask for compensation for the rights to basically perpetuate and perpetually giving rights to this piece of property, virtually ownership of this piece of property, I would request, I guess, that we look at what the agreement says in the sense of enlarging the garage, or if the garage should be removed for some reason, that the land revert to the city, or that the use of the land for a garage, if that changes for some reason, that there's no longer a garage, but in fact an accessory dwelling or something along that line, that we remain some control over what happens on this piece of property. And I don't know whether we've written in an agreement that has those kinds of conditions in it. I have not seen any document that says what that agreement actually consists of.
Okay, I'll get you an answer in a minute. Ms. Adams had a comment. Let me get her next.
No, no Chair, I don't.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anyone from the legal department out there that can comment on this?
Mr. Chair, I'm here, Angela Carmen. I'll be happy to answer those questions if you would like.
As a floor.
Sure. Councilmember Larson, certainly those type of terms can be and have in the past been included in similar types of agreements. So that's not a problem. I think the challenge here, just from a factual standpoint, is that when the city purchased the property, it purchased the property knowing that that garage item was there, and there's an argument that the prior, that the owner had adverse possession. And so I think in an effort to try to resolve this and be reasonable, there was a commitment to try to develop a reasonable encroachment agreement to resolve the issue because, I mean, it was obviously there when we purchased the property and had been there for some time. As far as your voice, we can address.
I would, I would request then that we put a certain deed covenants on the transference to make sure that nothing else happens on this piece of property other than the garage itself, and that it not be improved or expanded or the use change without permission of the city or some control over it. Because if we transfer it without those kinds of controls, we don't know what's going to happen there.
Now, keep in mind, it's an encroachment agreement, so it's not a full, right, outright transfer. But if that's certainly what council wants to do, we can certainly add that to the.
But it's an encroachment with rights transferred in perpetuity, which was virtually a transference of the property rights to any subsequent owner, which could change, which is going to change, obviously. As soon as the sale of the property is successful, which apparently is what their plans are. And they're going to monetize, they're going to monetize this particular improvement as part of the sale of that property, and it's, none of that monetization is coming back to the city.
I understand.
Mr. McIntosh, you had a comment?
Yeah, I mean, to me, there's kind of a threshold at which this becomes an issue, and to me, this is not, this is below the threshold. Tax card lists the value of the land for the entire house, not including this segment. I think it's $21,000 or something like that. So that's for the entire property, and this is a much smaller sliver that's not included in that number. So I don't think this puts us at any great financial, you know, distress. Also, the fact that we bought it knowing that this was in place is a big part of this, too. I do think, though, at some point, a more consequential, you know, we have to have a, I think we should have a line at some point that says, this is a consequence enough that it really does need to have, to come before full council, you know, to be negotiated by full council before the deal is essentially done, which is, sounds like it's happened here. But this, this one, I think, has, there's no harm, no foul to the city on it. I just don't see how there's any negative impact. I understand John's point, but I think this one doesn't really do us any harm.
Okay, Ms. Adams, this is your ward, would you like to make some type of motion?
Thank you, Chair. I would like to make a motion that we approve consent agenda item 13, please.
Chair, second.
Second.
Have a motion second approved, item C13, and the city clerk will please poll the committee members.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes, it is approved. Thank you, and it will be on the January 3rd agenda, John, if you want to bring it up then. We have two general agenda items, G1 and G2. If the city clerk will please read G1.
Item G1, information on financial statement audit and the annual comprehensive financial report.
Kelly Latham, I saw you out there somewhere. Would you like to comment on this?
Yes, good afternoon, Chair Clark, Mayor joins, Mayor Pro Tim Adams and City Council. This item is the annual presentation of the city's financial report and audit. One thing to note this year is the name change on the report. The report is now called the annual comprehensive financial report. And the auditors are here. Dan Gogarty is our director with Cherry Becker CPA, and he will be presenting the required auditor communication to you this evening.
Okay, sir. You have the floor, if you'll unmute and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Your name is Daniel Gogarty, Director at Cherry Becker.
Thank you, sir. Please continue.
And what I have here for you today is a short presentation just to discuss the audit results overall, as well as some information that the local government commission has required that we present to the board in open session on an annual basis. So I'll just go straight into the, to the actual presentation itself. I always like to just remind everyone of our role as the external, before we get into the actual results. Our role is to provide an audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. We also performed our audit in accordance with government auditing standards. That's all in which to provide and express an opinion. Our opinion is based on the audit work that we perform to obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatement. And then there's certain communications that we are required to communicate to you all in this presentation, but then also in a letter that you will have received, which is any policy changes that have occurred from accounting principles that have been adopted in the current year, any significant estimates, and then any journal entries posted or posed as part of our audit. From a result standpoint, we are giving four opinions throughout the audit of the city, the first of which is on the financial statements themselves. Second is on internal controls or financial reporting, also known as the Yellow Book Audit, or also known as government auditing standards. And then we give two separate opinions, one on your federal state, federal funding that we audit under a single audit, and one under your state single audit funding. In all four cases, we issued an unmodified opinion. That's also known as a clean opinion. It's the highest level opinion we can give under our standards. In terms of internal controls, we noted no issues that we consider to be a material weakness or a significant deficiency in internal controls as it relates to the financial statements or as it relates to the single audits that we performed. We did have one item that we consider to be a non-material, non-compliance, single audit finding. It had to do with filing of an annual report for the highway planning grant. Highway planning grant was one of the four major programs we tested under the federal, for federal programs this year. It was highway planning, transit authority, due to the CARES Act money that was received for that funding, coronavirus relief funds, and then also disaster relief grants as well. And then we also tested from a state perspective, the PAL bill grant. In all instances, we found no issues, other than the one noted earlier about the non-material, non-compliance with internal controls or compliance on any of these other programs. From the required communication, we, there were no policy changes. There was a new accounting standard, but it did not affect the city. For significant estimates, those estimates mainly related depreciation, allowance for doubtful accounts, and then your actuarial valuations for the various pension plans and other post-employment benefits that you offer the city, at the city. From an adjusting journal entry standpoint, we had no adjusting journal entries and only one passage on seeing journal entry that was not considered material to the financial statements overall. What this basically means, the financial statements that were, the information that was provided to us at the beginning of our audit is what you see in your annual comprehensive financial report that you're going to review. And basically, there were no changes from the result of any of our audit procedures performed. So the next couple of slides, before I get into the next two or three slides here, I just want to mention to you all, what's different from previous years, we weren't required in previous years to report to you unless there was something of significance or issue of findings that needed to be reported to your level. The local government commission created a policy this past year that we have to, that all orders have to present to all cities, towns, counties, boards, or councils within 45 days of issuing our audit report to present certain performance indicators that have been chosen by the local government commission as important indicators to be aware of and to be monitoring throughout the years. So in the next couple of slides, these are your results from those performance indicators, and you will see there's some here that we have multiple years presented. But just speaking to you about this first one, this one is related to the general fund, and this relates to fund balance available. Now, you might be looking at this and saying, 38% seems higher than what you've been reported in other cases. When you, when you talk about the general fund, this formula specifically requires the debt service fund balance to be included in it. So that is why it's a little higher percentage than maybe you're used to seeing when you're just looking at the general fund alone. But from a LGC threshold standpoint, you have to be above 25% to be, to be considered healthy. And you can see here, it's only growing over the past three years and now to a 38% balance in 2021. For the water and sewer fund, they do a quick ratio, which is just in, looking at your current assets to current liabilities to be able to pay those liabilities. They just want something greater than or equal to a 1.0 ratio. This year, you had a 3.08, so three times the amount that was required at the minimum threshold. And then some other ones that basically say the same thing, as you can see on the last slide, but you can see it here in a different format, is they want to have your operating net income excluding depreciation plus any debt principal paid to be greater than zero, which you obviously have met that with just south of $45 million in the current year. And then for unrestricted to total expenses and debt service, to be at least 16%, which is roughly about two months' worth of expenditures, and you're at 95.7%. So clearly have met all the thresholds required by the LGC. And then the last slide I have here on the LGC performance indicators is there's just some other factors that they want reported to you all. Your audit was submitted by October 31st, so you were submitted within five months of your fiscal year end, four months within your fiscal year end. You just have to do it within five months to not be considered an issue. From a budgeted tax levy standpoint, you collected more than you had budgeted for by over about 1%, so you had no issue there. This would be if you actually collected less than what you were budgeting. You also have an effective pre-audit process to avoid any budget violations that would be pervasive in nature. And we noted no late debt service payments or any debt covenant compliance issues as a result of our audit procedures. So with that, I'll open it up. Anyone has any questions or would like me to go back to any one of the slides?
Any questions for the outside auditor?
I do. Chair Clark.
Ms. Adams, I see you, please, go ahead.
Yes, so, is that Gogarty?
Gogarty, yes.
Gogarty, Gogarty. Mr. Gogarty, could you go back to the slide where you showed the fund balance for the three years and the 38.43%? What is the debt fund balance versus the general fund balance? What's the difference? What's the split?
You're at about 14% if you just include the general fund balance alone. You're 14.8, I think, Kelly, is that the exact number?
Yes, the way that we calculate it within the policy, the general fund is 14.85%.
Okay, so that makes us, what, about 12 on the debt side?
13.
38.43.
23%.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Saunders, I saw you out there as the chief financial officer. Do you have any comments you would like to make?
Thank you, Chairman Clark. I'd only like to say that the audit was completed under Kelly Latham's direction this year, and I thought it was a really good year. We had a good audit, and just say thank you to her and the staff for a successful year.
Thank you. I'll throw this question out. I don't know who wants to answer. Would somebody please define what the local government commission is? That's a very important organization that most people have never heard of. Ms. Saunders, can you do that, or?
Sure, I'll be glad to.
Go right ahead.
I will. So the local government commission was created in the 30s in a response to the depression when many local governments in North Carolina were filing bankruptcy. So this governing body was created to oversee local governments. And, you know, up until probably just the last couple of years, they, there really were just oversight, but there have been a lot of smaller local governments that have been in severe financial stress over the last, I'd say, probably five years. And they have had to step in and actually serve as a finance officer in some cases. But they review our financial report, they review any debt that we have to issue. So they're just a governing body for local governments in North Carolina. And I do think it's one of the reasons that North Carolina is typically fairly highly rated with the rating agencies is because we do have that oversight that a lot of states do not have.
Okay, and what is our current bond rating?
AAA.
AAA, yeah, okay. Ms. Driver, I saw you out there also as head of our utilities division. You had two or three items, and there's any comments you would like to make? She may not be there. Anyway, okay, we got some questions from council members. Mr. McIntosh first.
Just more of a comment on Ms. Saunders's briefing there is that I serve on board of North Carolina League of Municipalities, and there's a division within that group that actually partners with municipalities that are having trouble, who the local government commission has identified as being sort of on the ropes. And so there's a, there's a definite effort to help folks out of that and provide expertise where it can be offered.
Thank you. Mr. Larson, next. John? I can't see you, so you're going to have to. Okay, I guess he did not have a comment. So can we go back to the normal screen, please? Okay, John, did you have a comment?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I had a little problem there. Going back to Councilmember Adams' comments about this charter number five. It's a layman, I'm trying to understand, are we combining our debt load with our fund balance? Is that what that 38 means?
It's not a debt load, it's the, we have a fund balance just to cover debt.
Right.
If you go to the budget package that you get each year, I believe that fund balance is shown on the same page with all the other fund balances. Is it, Ms. Saunders?
It is. Councilmember Clark and Larson, so many local governments do not have a debt service fund. So it's the local government commission's benchmark that you should have 25% in your savings account, basically. And so what that slide shows is since we have a debt service fund, it's combining our general fund and our debt service together and saying we meet in or above what the local government commission would require because we have two separate funds.
Ms. Garrett, if we could send out that page, that one pager from the budget book that shows all the fund balances, that'd be helpful. Thank you. John, go ahead. John, go ahead.
Yeah, so that means, that means our ability to borrow money is included in this 38%?
Correct. That is correct.
It's our actual 14% funds on hand, which is our current balance, but also the amount of money we can borrow runs it up to 38%?
Yes, and the amount that we have set aside to pay our debt over the next 20 years.
Okay.
So remember, we added money when we had the referendums and tax pennies upfront. So that frontloads your debt service fund, and it's there to pay your debt over time.
So that's a service fund that's set aside from our normal balance?
Correct, correct, to pay the debt.
To pay our debt on it. So we have a fund specifically to do that.
That is correct.
Yeah.
I'm sorry to.
No, that's fine. And if the staff will please send out that page, you'll see there's a fund balance for the 911 emergency, there's a fund balance for health insurance, there's a fund balance for the cemetery, I believe, and on and on. And if y'all could send that out, it'd be very helpful. I think it's just one page. Ms. Latham, anything else from you?
No, I have nothing else unless you have further questions for us.
No, sound like a great report to me. Sound like to me, the Finance Committee does an outstanding job. Okay, that was information only. We will now go to G2. City Clerk, please read this one.
Item G2, resolution approving the CY 2022 federal action plan for the city of Winston-Salem.
I've got two names here, Mr. Tesh or Ms. Martin, who wants to present this?
Good afternoon, Chairman Clark, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, and members of the council. I will do exactly this and kick it to the second name on there, Meredith Martin, who is now the city's Deputy Budget and Performance Management Director, has been working with Leslie Mazingo on this. I'll turn it over to her and Leslie.
Okay, Ms. Martin?
Good afternoon, Chair Clark, Mayor joins, Mayor Pro Tim Adams, members of the committee and council. The city's federal action plan is reviewed each year on this time as we quickly approach calendar year 2022. We're asking that you review and approve the proposed calendar year 2022 federal action plan that is attached. City's federal lobbyist, Leslie Mazingo, who's with Strategics, is here to briefly review the proposed action plan and take any comments or questions that you would like to ask. Leslie?
Thanks, Meredith, I appreciate it. Good evening, everyone, mayor, council manager. It's wonderful to see you all. Again, Leslie Mazingo, Strategics Consulting, here to discuss with you your federal action plan. And as you know, history repeats itself in this case. So when we're between the first and second session of Congress, we do a review and revise based on just things that have been accomplished and make sure that we're staying up to date on the issues. And then between the end of one Congress and the start of a next, which will be next year this time, then we meet with you individually and we completely do a revamp based on leadership positions and things of that nature within Congress. But given that there's no changes in leadership, many of the issues carry over. This particular time, we are looking to, you know, just to do some tweaking. So what happens first is I take the existing federal action plan and I make suggested changes based on, again, what's been accomplished. And then it goes through your management, directors have a chance to weigh in, we give a copy to all of you and ask for your input. And so today, I want to very briefly tell you about some of the changes we made, and then I'm happy, of course, to answer questions and then also take any input that you have in terms of changes. The main things that you're going to notice about this action plan compared to last year's is that there were some things, but specifically the ARP money that was allocated directly to local governments like Winston-Salem. We were able to get that achieved, and I won't say we as in just Strategics, I mean all the national groups, and an incredible effort by all of you in terms of weighing in with the congressional delegation on phone calls and virtual meetings and just a terrific effort. And Mayor Pro Tim Adams leading a great deal of that through the position on the League of Cities. And so in any case, that was a valid group effort. And so we have, we've taken that and left it to additional flexibility, because we do have a current piece of legislation pending in the House that would allow those funds to go even further and, again, provide additional flexibility to what you can do with those funds. And I've been working, I've been on all of the calls every week with the ARP task force that you have, and they're aware of the, you know, of the updates on that. Your Congresswoman is already a co-sponsor, so we're very happy to have Congresswoman Manning on that bill. There are, the second line there in competitive grants and congressionally-directed spending, I want to point out there that we, instead of listing all the different projects that we plan to pursue, we put a generic entry here that we want support for all of our grant applications and all of our projects submitted. And a great example of that is that we have the recently signed into law Infrastructure Investment in Jobs Act. There is over $100 billion in five, over five years, more than a dozen new infrastructure competitive grant programs. And since we're still going through an analysis of which projects fit best with those new grant opportunities, we don't want to really, you know, put ourselves in a corner of saying we're definitely going for this grant for this project. So we wanted to support all of it, and we don't want to leave any dollars left behind. And so what you will see is that the list of projects and grants are ongoing. So that's why that remains more of an umbrella statement. And then beyond that, really the largest changes came, as you will see on the second part under, on the backside there, public infrastructure. Because we have the Infrastructure and Investment Jobs Act, we don't have as many things listed out that we would like to accomplish, but instead, again, asked our members of Congress to continue supporting our efforts within that IIJA, or as the White House is now calling its administration calls it, the bipartisan infrastructure law. So I will let you know, if you see IIJA or BIL, those are the same things, but this was written before, before that name became public. So.
Let's ask you a question, let specifically?
Yes, sir.
I call it the infrastructure bill. Will X amount of money be prorated on a per capita basis, so to speak? And if so, do we know how much money we will get from that portion of it? Second question is, is there money in that infrastructure bill that is competitive that we'll have to go after as well?
Yes, sir. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, great question. The first being that, yes, the formula funds that normally go through the state for surface transportation laws, those are reauthorized and funded by this bill. And so, and in some cases, we're waiting on appropriations, but they are reauthorized for the next five years. And I don't have that exact amount in terms of what you'll be receiving, but that is a formula base that comes through the state. I can certainly investigate that and get it brought back to council in terms of what it.
I would love to have a number there.
Okay.
And the second question as far as competitive grants in that group?
Yes, so the formula funding, by the way, I just should mention, that amount has gone up. They have increased the amount of money for many of the formulas. And in particular, I call to your attention the Transportation Alternatives Program, which provides a lot in terms of active transportation, your greenways, bike pit, pathways, things of that nature. So some of the programs also saw an increase from previous years. Now, competitive grants, we have not only some of the existing competitive grants, like the RACE grant that we applied for this year, unfortunately unsuccessfully, but we're working on getting some feedback so we can apply again. But there's also more than a dozen new competitive grants in this infrastructure package. And it's worth noting, again, this is not just your surface transportation reauthorization bill. This is called an infrastructure package because it includes resiliency, water and wastewater, broadband. So there's a number of things in this package that go beyond your typical surface transportation. We also don't have on here, because we don't have the results of it yet, but I do want to add for your, you know, for your knowledge, that we still have the Build Back Better Act pending in Congress. That will also have additional programs and competitive grants and including a number of new funding opportunities for affordable housing. So there's a number of things that are still going on, and I can assure you that we are working very diligently to go after every grant possible.
Okay, Mr. McIntosh had a comment at this point.
Yeah, just a question for Leslie. I mean, I'm assuming as is normally the case, that you read our minds and know kind of the things that we think are important. So this, looking at an overview of sort of the categories, I'm comfortable with this as an overview, but if I have specific items or projects or ideas, I should just email you those, right?
Yes, sir, that'd be absolutely fine. If you could also copy Meredith, of course, she's my, yeah, she's the person I report to, and we will work on it. We are in the process right now of matching up. I've provided the city with, you know, sort of the five buckets of funding, if you will. And so because we have so many, you've got your American Rescue Plan money, you have competitive grants, you have congressionally-directed spending, and then, like I said, we have this IIJ money and Build Back Better. So we have lots of different methods, and in some extent, it makes people's head kind of spin about where all this money, you know, is and to make sure that you're not missing it, which is, that's my job for you, right? Is to make sure you don't miss that. And so we're in the process right now of gathering those projects. And not only, I will say, not only shovel-ready, which we're used to hearing, but what's called shovel-worthy. So there's planning dollars now that we have not seen before. These really are transformational years beyond ARP. This IIJA is, you know, over a trillion dollars of new investments in infrastructure. You know, it's particularly in terms of electric vehicle infrastructure and build-out. I mean, lots of really new, wonderful things you haven't been able to do before. So we are absolutely collecting those projects and working with all the departments and looking for a place to put everything that we can. So please do send us your recommendations and your projects of passion.
Thank you. Ms. Adams, you had a question, comment?
Yes, thank you, Chair Clark. Ms. Mazingo, how you doing?
Nice to see you, ma'am. Very nice to see you.
Lot of work.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We have a lot going on these days, but it's exciting stuff. It's good to be where we are.
Mayor, Chair, city staff, council. We have a unique opportunity right now, just like we did with that Beltway or the Loop. We have a unique opportunity right now to get some rail to Winston. I don't have to tell you that if Winston doesn't get rail, just like what you're seeing going on economically, developing in Guilford and even Randolph and Wake and Durham and Mac and all those other little counties throughout all the state. If we don't push now to get rail, we know it's not going to happen this year, next year, but we have got to get the plan, commitment, money set aside, matching grants. Rail is critical to the future of Winston-Salem, Winston-Salem and Forsyth County. You can't move people and goods in the world we live in if you don't have rail. Nobody looks at you. And we have an opportunity after doing union, that we now mayor, just like you and I and others was in Raleigh and talking with them about our Beltway 10 years ago, our Loop, it's our responsibility to take that one also to the top of our priority list for the future of the citizens of Winston-Salem and Forsyth County. That's all I got to say. I need my choo-choo. Thank you.
Mr. Larson?
Yes, yes, I would simply like to reiterate that that was exactly what I was going to bring up, and thank you, DeeDee, for bringing it up. This is, this is a window that we have to do, an iconic significant change in Winston-Salem that has lasting value. And if we can jump on it at this point in time where the money's out there in the right little pockets that we may have to mine individually to find that money, but I'm sure our staff and other people will help do that. We got a great railroad station. We've spent a lot of money down there already lining ourselves up to have this, to receive the trains. Now we just need to make it happen. And I'm not sure what it takes to do that. I don't know financially, I don't know what kind of administrative hoops or what kind of permissions, what kind of cooperations need to be made, but we need to get on it at this point in time. And I really hope that staff will follow what DeeDee's asking for and forgive this, take this to the top of the priority list, because it is, it is an opportunity we have. And a window won't be here in five years, probably. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you had a question, comment?
You're muted.
I don't even see you. There is, you see me there? Oh, yeah, there you go. I certainly agree with the Mayor Pro Tim and Councilmember Larson. I've looked into this a little bit, and we'll have to have a battle in two areas. One is the federal funding and the dollars. We also got to convince the railroad that it makes sense for them, because what I've been told is that the railroads have not included us on the list because of their concern about the marketability of it. So we just have to take it in on two different tracks, federal and then directly to the railroad. Leslie, I interrupted you. You were two-thirds of the way through. Is anything else you wanted to add from your presentation?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, I think that, I'm just pointing out that the public infrastructure has been adjusted because that bill has passed. Most of the other areas that you see are ongoing because we're still looking to fund those. As you all know from doing this for a number of years, that we often have to go back to the well more than once to get the things that we want funded. And so, again, for the, for the input that we're receiving now and otherwise, we, that's what we're here, is to take that input, and you will see it come before full council in January for final approval before we take it to Washington.
Thank you, ma'am. I will comment particularly to our new council members. In March of each year, we normally go up for the National League of Cities Annual Meeting in Washington. There are a number of very good programs that take place, but one of the highlights of the trip is we did get up with this Mazingo, and we visit some of our congressional leaders, senators and Congress folks. We also visit the actual departments that control some of this money, Department of Transportation, Housing, Urban Development, Commerce, folks like that. So I highly recommend it to you. I will say, last year, it did not occur, and in 2020, we had the honor, I think it was the first outbreak of COVID, we went to the meeting and found out that the, I think it was the Colorado delegation all had COVID, and so we had to self-quarantine when we got back, but no one was harmed. But anyway, that's usually, it's going to be about the second week, I think, in March. I recommend that. Oh, by the way, we do need to approve this from the committee level, and then it will be approved at the council level. Can I get a motion to approve G2?
Move for approval.
Thank you. We have a motion by Adams, second by McIntosh. The city clerk, please poll the committee.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes. That is the last item of the agenda. Is there anything else anyone would like to bring up? Seeing none, the Public Safety Committee will meet at 6 o'clock, which is in about 45 minutes. Mr. Taylor will be chairing that. I do want to thank everyone for a good year. I know the COVID year, it has been tough, but we have persevered and we have accomplished and we have moved the ball forward, which has been not easy to do, but I thank you for your efforts. And I see them, at least in our area, summed up in, the city's in extremely good financial position right now, despite going through all we've been through. And as they say, I think still think our best days are in front of us. With that, have a merry holiday. Goodbye. We're adjourned.